Regular board meeting of the Richland Two School Board of Trustees where we have just returned from executive session. Hang on just a second. Discussing a student appeal and student admission request into the district's adult education program. At this time, we will move into our item 3.1 Inspirational Moment and Pledge of Allegiance. And Inspirational Moment will be me. One of our board members, Mr. Plank, is actually out of town on business this evening. He wanted to be here very much, so much so that he's called in, so we've got him on speakerphone, so we can't talk about him.[54.03][54.03](Laughter). So he's joining us here on speakerphone, although he couldn't be here physically, so I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. For tonight's Inspirational Moment, I'd like to share my favorite thing in the world to do, a book. "I Like Myself," by Karen Beaumont, illustrated by David Cutrow. "I like myself. I like myself. I'm glad I'm me. There's no one else I'd rather be. I like my eyes, my ears, my nose, I like my fingers and my toes. I like me wild, I like me tame, I like me different and the same. I like me fast, I like me slow, I like me everywhere I go. I like me on the inside, too, for all I think and say and do. Inside, outside, upside down, from head to toe and all around, I like it all. It is all me, and me is all I ever want to be. And I don't care in any way what someone else may think or say. I may be called a silly nut or crazy cuckoo bird, so what? I'm having too much fun, you see, for anything to bother me. Even when I look a mess, I still don't like me any less, 'cause nothing in this world, you know, can change what's deep inside, and so... No matter if they stop and stare, no person ever, anywhere, can make me feel that what they see is all there really is to me. I'd still like me wet with fleas or warts, or with a silly snout that snorts. Or knobbly knees, or hippo hips, or purple polka-dotted lips. Or beaver breath, or stinky toes, or horns protruding from my nose. Or yikes, with spikes all down my spine, or hair that's like a porcupine, I still would be the same, you see. I'd like myself because I'm me. And I'm sharing this book because I am a bookworm. There's nothing that I enjoy more than reading a book and sharing it with a child. And I know that we do a pretty decent job of thanking our students for being in our district, for allowing us to educate them, the parents that entrust us to have their students here. We try to thank our teachers, we thank our administrators, we appreciate our superintendent. We do a pretty good job of thanking people for whom we are appreciative, and I'd just like to encourage all of us to like yourself, and thank yourself, and to appreciate yourself. But because if you don't appreciate yourself, it's kind of hard to radiate anything different for others. So I like myself, and I hope you do, too. At this time, we'll have the presentation of the colors.
(Inaudible)
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Blythewood, to Blythewood High School for providing the presentation of colors. They were actually scheduled to come at the last board meeting, so it's nice to know that when things fall apart, and we have things that go beyond our control, that things fall in line, so we still haven't missed a beat, and we got the same school to be able to present the colors, so thank them for that. Moving right along, we'll move into item 4.1, Approval of Our Agenda. If I could get a motion at this time? Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Oh, you want me to read the motion?
Did you? Yes, please.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for the September 25th, 2018 board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Mr. Manning, Mrs. Agostini, that the agenda for the September 25th, 2018 board meeting be accepted, and we'll now vote. On the same, please. And, Mr. Plank, if you would, once we get our pop-up, we'll let you know, and you can designate by yea or nay, please, sir. Okay? Oh, you're logged in, I forgot. He's techno-savvy, and he's logged in, so his vote should appear on screen. Thank you very much. By a vote of seven to zero unanimously, accept the agenda as approved. Now we'll move into item five, Consent Agenda. If I could get a motion at this time, please?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve the consent agenda with the amendment to change release from at the end of the 2018-2019 school year, to change release from the 2018-2019 school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Agostini, properly seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson, and we'll go to a vote at this time, please? That we accept the consent agenda with the proposed revision. Is it correct on screen, Mrs. Agostini?
Oh.
Is it correct on screen?
It's from, no, it's supposed to be, yeah, that's correct, from the end of the 2018-2019 school year, um, to release from.
Okay. Thank you so much. We can vote at this time? By a vote of seven to zero, we have approved the consent agenda as proposed. Mr. Plank, I think we've got our technology set up, so that if you want to call in on this line, you can do so. If it doesn't work, just call back on that line.
Okay, I'll do it right now, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll move on to item 6.1, which is public participation. Is it ready? No? Well, he'll call back then. Which is public participation, this is a time when we allow, we are happy to have our public here, but we also allow anyone who would like to address the board to feel free to do so. We have one person who's signed up tonight, Chris Haas. Feel free to come forward, and as always, we ask that you share your name with us, not your address, because that would be identifying personal information. We ask that you refrain from identifying any specific schools, or teachers, or students while you're here. We're happy that you're here. Make sure the button, yeah, the button is red. Feel free to continue. Thank you so much. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Did you say my name?
Yes, I'm sorry.
My name is Chris Haas. I'm a teacher at the Center for Inquiry, but also the area representative for SE for Ed.
Thank you.
And what I wanted to just, I just provide an update on some action items that we've been working on since last time I came and spoke to you all in advance of the upcoming elections. So, we've been working on voter registration. We worked to register teachers here in the district during the District in Service Day at three different sites, and we were also able to assist Libby Roof and staffing tables that schools were putting on as well, in terms of registering voters, but also getting out pamphlets of information that people would need. We've also sent out candidate surveys to all people running for office at the local, state, and national level, so that when educators go to the polls, they're very clear in terms of what each person stands for, specifically in regards to issues that relate to education. Some of you have received those surveys, and we thank you for getting them back to us. We are also putting on a conference this Saturday, in which State Senator Mike Fanning will be our keynote speaker, but we have other people, including Patrick Kelly from the district, Kathy Manis from PSTA, and others, so that teachers can come learn more about Act 388, and topics like ethics in education, advocacy for students, federal and state mandates, and issues around school funding, so they can better understand some things that oftentimes teachers don't understand all that well at all. We're having a meeting on October 3rd, so we can try to establish representatives at each school site, instead of me giving information out to everyone, so we can have real people talking to teachers, but also to engage in a writing campaign where we can send letters to everyone running for state senate and state house, to let them know, best of luck, but we're going to get in touch with you immediately afterwards, because we have some very strong expectations for what you might do to support education. On election day, we are going to have a celebration at Random Tap, for hopefully celebrating the fact that lots of teachers are getting out to the polls this year, and making their voices heard. And then finally, we are working to establish our expectations, that we're going to communicate prior to the first 2019 legislative section, session, so that as soon as we find out who's elected, we can let people know what we want to see happen in terms of school funding, to reverse some poor trends in our state, but also in terms of teacher pay, and also discipline issues in relation to South Carolina educational laws and regulations that we think really should be revisited as well. I wish we had state organizations that were paid to do the amount of research and work that this entails on evenings and weekends, for people like me, who has four children, who has a second job, and who teaches each and every day. It's a lot of work to take on, but it's really, really important, and I'm so thankful for all the people who are here. We have a couple of teachers here tonight with me, just to show their support for education, and that we're willing to do things. And I wanted to end quickly with things that you all could do to support us. One is you could vocally support us when you speak with teachers, and especially with administrators. A lot of people do support us, but we do still have some administrators who warrant their teachers away from our organization, which kind of scares me, because teachers need to come together and make their voice heard. I invite all of you to show up to any of our area meetings, and I'm happy to give you the dates for those. And then lastly, maybe to help us establish some sort of effective and efficient opportunity where we can communicate with people about things that we're working on, and things that we would love to have, action items on your part as well, but we don't always know who to go to with that information, and that would be very helpful to have. And that's it. That's my three minutes. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming before us, and as always, sharing important information. We appreciate that. Next, we'll move in to, move on to item 7.1, our legislative update. Mr. Shad.
Madam Chair, there is no legislative update for this particular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Shad, and just as a, just as a matter of housekeeping, we keep that item there. The things that happen at legislative level directly affect us, some directly, some indirectly, so we always have that on our agenda to be ready to report at any time, so if there's nothing significant to, they're not in session right now, they will be next week, but if there's nothing significant to report on, we don't, but we want to keep that on our agenda as a standing item, because it's important. Thank you, Mr. Shad. At this time, we'll move on to item 8, 8.1, Student Appeals. This time, we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move that we deny the appeal for student number one.
Is there a second at this time?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, that the appeal for student one, the only student we have tonight, be denied. At this time, we'll take it to a vote. By a vote of seven to zero, it's unanimous that the appeal for student one be denied. At this time, we'll accept a recommendation for item 8.2, Student Admission Request, there's only one, into the district's adult education program.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve the adult education request for student number one.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second? Dr. Elkins Johnson, it's been moved and properly seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Dr. Elkins Johnson, that the student admission request into the district's adult education program be approved. At this time, we'll vote. Mr. Plank, can you still hear us okay?
Yeah, I got you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. By a vote of seven to zero, we unanimously approved the admission request. Now we'll move into, move on to item 9.1, Approval of Policy Revisions, DID, inventories, fixed assets, DK, payment procedures, DKB, salary deductions. Dr. Davis.
Madam Chair, members of the board, administration brings before you for your approval of the policy revisions as submitted by administration for the policies DID, DK, DKB, that is inventories, fixed assets, payment procedures, and salary deductions.
Madam Chair. I move that the board approves the policy revisions as submitted by the administration for policies DID, inventories, fixed assets, DK, payment procedures, and DKB, salary deductions.
Thank you, Mr. Shad.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. It's been motioned and properly seconded, and now we'll through the question. To vote? Thank you. Has everyone wishing to vote, voted? Okay. By a vote of seven to zero, the policies, the policies set forth have been approved. At this time, we'll move on to item 10.1, Community Eligibility Provision of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010. Dr. Davis. Actually... Actually, it's action requested, so we'll have to get a motion and a second before we can entertain discussion on this item. My apologies.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
I move that at this time, that we lay aside the, this proposed resolution until the next board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Dr. Shad, Mr. Shad and Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there any discussion at this time?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Plank?
Yeah, I did not hear the motion. Can I hear that again, please?
Do you want to repeat it, Mr. Shad? Well, the motion was to lay, to lay, because, well, we can discuss it after we've made the motion and seconded it. It's to lay this resolution aside until the next board meeting. And now, and now I'm asking for discussion. Is there any discussion? Perhaps you want to, is there any discussion at this time? If not, we'll receive the question to vote. Dr. Elkins Johnson? Can everyone hear me okay? I know I'm having some microphone issues. Yes? Yes? No? No? Thank you. Okay, I'll talk louder. Yes? Yeah? Yes? Okay. Has everyone wishing to vote, voted? Oh, gosh, I've lost my screen. Yes, sir? Yeah, the clarification, I'll be audible. It's not to table it, it's to lay this item until the, to the next board meeting. We don't want to table it. We do want to bring it up again. Thank you, Mr. Shad. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion passes. At this time, we'll move on to item 11, and item 11.1, we have the proposed policies, and because you're going to repeat the policies, Dr. Davis, I won't go through them. Have at it.
There are quite a bit of proposed policies for your consideration and review. As you are aware, due to the cancellation of our previous board meeting, we've had to combine a few of the policies, but I'm sure you all were able to get an opportunity to review those policies. So the policy revisions that we're bringing before the board for your, for your review will be policies DDB, which is online fundraising campaigns and crowdsourcing, DIE, the fiscal accounting audits, which is a new policy, DKC, expense authorization reimbursements, AC, the non-discrimination slash equal opportunities, GBA, the open hiring, equal opportunity, opportunity and affirmative action, GCE, professional staff recruitment, GCEC, posting and advertising of professional vacancies, GCF, professional staff hiring, and GDF, support staff hiring. And as you remember from our, the School Board Association Conference, several of these policies are grouped together as a result of changes that need to be made to the non-discrimination act. We have Dr. Marshall Lynn Franklin, who stands before you, to address any questions that she may have regarding these policies.
And if I may interject, it might be easier just to go through them one by one, Dr., okay? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, so we have two sets of policies for your consideration. The first set of policies is from Section D, and are part of our ongoing policy revision project. These are the final policies in Section D. Congratulations.[1340.42][1340.42](Laughter). All changes in the policies are recommendations from the School Boards Association, except where highlighted in yellow. Yellow highlights indicate recommendations made by district administration. Dr. Miley is available to answer your questions related to content in the policies from Section D. That's DDB, online fundraising campaigns, crowdfunding, DIE, fiscal accounting audits, and DKC, expense authorization reimbursement.
Madam Chair. I have a question regarding policy DDB and the crowdfunding. This policy is specifically for employees. Does it pertain to students?
It pertains to everyone, yes. Students, and employees, and individuals outside that aren't employees. It's crowdfunding in the district, addressing our schools.
Okay. Then I guess I'm wondering if maybe we need to change the first sentence, because to me, it seems like it's addressing only employees and not students as well. Did I? I would like to include students in there, because my question, you know, was coming down later, where it says, "any individual," but...
The first, the first paragraph does address just employees. The second, second addressed any, in fact, there was a recommendation to change individual to employee in the second paragraph, and we recommend that we stick with individual, because that is, this is addressing non-employees. So I would say that, that would also address students, but we can certainly incorporate language to address students specifically.
Let me ask a question.
Sure.
This presentation, and our, one of our recent conferences, and that was one of our recent conferences, and they were, they were talking about employees, and said they wanted it, worried it in such a way that it wouldn't cover anyone? Sorry. I actually attended this, this breakout session at one of our recent conferences, and the emphasis was on employees, if I'm not, if it was talking about teachers, who have really good intentions, and want to find ways to fundraise for, you know, their classrooms, and then there may be something that they, they, you know, that they've earned an item, and does it stay with you, or the next classroom? But I think they said that they, that it was pertaining to employees, but they wanted it to, as you said, collectively cover anyone who tries to do, because it may be a student who does, you know, who does fundraising for their classroom, and then when you've, when you've earned, when you've won something, an item, a rocket or something, you know, does it belong to that classroom, or does it belong to the student? And so, I think they said that it was for employees, but that it would be, but the recommendation they would, they would hand down to districts is that it be able to cover all, anyone, and I think that's what's the intent is, in that, in that paragraph, any individual.
Correct.
From my understanding, from having attended that breakout session.
Madam Chair. I'll support the recommendation to clarify, not just certify district employee, but the fact that it covers any of our students. I just think the clarity in that first paragraph would be...
To include students.
Yeah, or reword it where it includes every, however, but just to clarify that.
What's your recommendation as to, thank you, Mr. Manning. What's your recommendation as to wording, Mrs. Agostini?
That the district employee or student may submit an online fundraising campaign proposal, that the student could also, I guess, but I just want it clarified that students are included in this, because the first paragraph leads me to believe that it's only for teachers.
Dr. Elkins Johnson? Thank you, Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you so much, and I guess my question would be, if we're including students, what's the liability? Are we going to have that student be attached to an adult for accountability, or are we going to take on the liability if a student misused the money?
That's a good question. In fact...
That's a good question. In fact, this is a new policy, and we don't have guidelines for, for group fund, crowdfunding right now, and if this is adopted by the board, we will have to craft some guidelines for the district to specify and be more clear on that. So that's one of our tasks, because this is new, and this is new to the district. So that'll be one of our tasks, is to develop some guidelines to further clarify exactly how we do it.
So I guess my question would be, we're voting on this at the next board meeting, will you guys come back with some craft information for us to review before we actually vote on this policy?
I don't know, I can't guarantee right this minute that we would have guidelines completed. My office would be the one that's doing this. Right now, we're, we're, we have the auditors here in the district, and we're completing our audit, so that's taking first priority for us right now. So we would do that as soon as we could, but I can't, I'm not sure I can promise we'd have it ready for, in two weeks.
I would like for us to just move it over, and let us talk as a team to work out what criteria we would like to have in place.
Would you like to, would you like to make a motion?
All right.
To lay it, to lay it aside.
Predetermined time. You can just lay it aside till predetermined time.
DDB? Mm-hmm. DDB?
Madam Chair.
Let's get through, yes, Mr. Shad.
Dr. Miley, I obviously understand the mindset, the rationale behind this, but... Let me give you a hypothetical. Let's say there is a teacher who has an after-school program or a mentoring group within the school district, within the school, and is supported by the school, but does not have the funds from the school or the district to do the work that they would like to do. And it's, let's say this is a teacher. And so if the teacher who had this program that ended up morphed into a school setting, so it's, it's sort of a hybrid, it's a nonprofit, but it's also involving district students, and it's benefiting the school, and they want to go out on Facebook and ask for donations. If this policy goes through, they must submit a fundraising campaign proposal to their principal, having already been told by the principal, "We don't have any funds to support you, but we still want you to do this." So they have to submit this, and the principal, if this goes through, and I know we're going to change some things, perhaps, so, but they still have to go through this process in order to do it on behalf of their students. Is that correct? And before you answer that... And before you answer that, I'm looking at the... The section right under the highlighted part that is struck through, the note. You see that as of October 2016?
Mm-hmm.
The paragraph under there. "Any individual who has not obtained the express written permission of an authorized district representative may not solicit donations of funds or materials on behalf of the district." Under my hypothetical, can that person who is still supporting the school, supporting the district by having these students in this mentoring program, if they don't get that express written permission under this policy, they can still go out and seek funds on behalf of the nonprofit side? Because it's not truly a district. They're not asking for money for the district.
I may have lost some of that in your lead-up. What I think, again, if the board passes this policy, as we would do with most policies that are this involved, we would develop some guidelines that would be much more specific. We do that whenever you pass a policy that directly affects us. So what I think it would allow is, if it's a nonprofit, they have their own fundraising mechanism, but they wouldn't be using our logos. If it's a district employee working for a fund, trying to put together some crowdfunding, they would be allowed to do it if they were approved by their principal and followed these guidelines and these requirements. If they use the funds for this other mixed group, that would be dependent on whether the principal approved it or not. So I'm not sure I followed your hypothetical example. I'm not sure that's the answer to your question. It's the only answer I've got tonight.
I think you followed it. But I just want us to be aware of that, that that may be going on.
Well, we've tried to avoid this whole idea because it's just fraught with a lot of issues, period. But it has kind of taken over anyway. So we realize that it's a necessary evil. And that's why we'll develop some guidelines that'll help us keep us straight.
I think...
Thank you, sir.
Are you good, Mr. Shad?
I think so.
Dr. Davis, I think you had a comment. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have a comment, Doctor? Because I have one as well. Good point, Mr. Shad. I got what you're saying. From having been in that seminar, and Tiffany, I think Ms. Richardson actually was over the seminar because it's fraught with legal. I think the intent that she was explaining is ownership of property. If you have a teacher who's not able to, I don't know, who needs a rocket, you know, as part of their science project, they can't afford a rocket. So they've gone online, they've gone to social media, and they've gotten a GoFundMe or something to that effect. And they've gotten this rocket that they're able to use for their science class. Great. But that teacher leaves the district, does that property belong to the school? Or does it belong to that teacher? And the common practice was the teachers who think that they fundraised for that item, take it with them. And then it becomes... So that's the intent? It's just, it's, that was the intent behind? Yeah, so that was the intent of... If I understood the workshop correctly, was the ownership of property. So with what you're talking about, if you've got another entity by which you're fundraising, then no comment.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
This would be another entity that uses... No other student, there's no students other than district students that are in this program.
I understand, as a part of that.
Right, it's part of the program.
So we probably need a little more clarification then. Thank you, Mr. Shad.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any more questions regarding... Thank you, Dr. Miley, regarding DDB? Are any of the policies under the D section? Because we're doing them all as a collective, are we not? She did? I was going to... She had a suggestion for a motion? She did, she did. We were going to try to go through all of them, and then at the end, make the requisite motion. She did. Any other questions under this section, under the D section?
The next set of policies are a part of the 2018 policy and legislative update. During the 2018 session, the General Assembly expanded state law to require employers to provide reasonable accommodations for medical needs arising from pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions. The School Boards Association recommends that school districts revise their nondiscrimination statement to include explicit protections for pregnancy, childbirth, and related conditions. Richland 2's nondiscrimination statement is defined in one policy, Policy AC, but it is referenced in several other policies, all of which appear in Section G of our policy manual. All changes in the policies are recommendations from the School Boards Association, except where highlighted in yellow. Yellow highlights indicate recommendations made by district administration. And Ms. Shawn Williams is available to answer your questions related to content in policies from Section G.
And if we could just go through them one by one, that would be great. Want to start with AC? Are there any questions or concerns regarding Policy AC? So we're doing AC and all of the Gs right now? Okay. That would be GBA, GCE. Any of the Gs policies? Are there any questions or concerns at this time? Please, please share them.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
On Policy GCEC, the third paragraph, I guess my first question is, when we're posting a job, or when a job becomes vacant, we must post it?
It's, yes, we do post most jobs, that is correct.
Okay. I'm wondering, on the third paragraph, "The superintendent or his/her designee may elect to announce the vacancies using the following resources other than," I would like to recommend, "in addition to the district's job posting system." To me, it sounds as though it's the option that we don't have to post it if we put "other than" versus "in addition to."
There are, if I may interject, there are situations or there are job opportunities that come available that we do not appoint. We do, I'm sorry, we do not post. I don't believe that there's a requirement to post every single, every vacancy that comes vacant in the school, in the district. Some positions, the superintendent has the latitude to assign or appoint individuals to certain positions, and then backfield those vacant positions that may be created from that. So that gives you the option to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
I guess that leads me to the question of, how is it determined when we post and when we don't post?
It would be in an administrative decision to post or not post a position based on the needs of the district as seen by administration or the superintendent.
Any other questions regarding this policy?
I have one more.
Mrs. Agostini.
In the last paragraph, it says, "three calendar days." I was wondering if we could put three business days? For example, if something was posted, and it's posted on a Friday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, people would not have the opportunity to... That's a very short period of time over the weekend if they didn't look at the postings. Is it possible to put three business days instead of three calendar days?
If that's the pleasure of the board.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Shad.
How often are postings on Fridays? Start on Fridays?
We hired over 472 certified staff members this school year. So the likelihood of positions being posted on Fridays are great.
How often are they only put up for three calendar days?
Not likely. Typically, they are listed, posted longer than three calendar days.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mrs. Agostini, is that a recommendation? Is that a motion you'd like to make with regard to the verbiage?
I'm not making a motion, it was just a suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding this policy or any policy in the Gs?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Plank.
I just wanted to say, Madam Chair, to let everyone know I was here. I miss Agostini's point. I think the business days make sense, even though it may vary, not be common practice. With this policy, it would be nice to be clear on that, so I support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plank. I think we've gone through all of the... The reason I'm asking if you're making a motion, Mrs. Agostini, is it helps them. If we can put, if you can just make a motion to that effect, so they know to take action, we can vote on it. Is that... I think they've asked us, when we have, when we have issues with regard to policies, just to make a motion, and we can vote on it, and so they have directive, clear directive. Is that correct? Is that my understanding?
Yes, ma'am.
They've asked for that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I don't know how we can take action on an item where there's no action requested.
Yes.
So I don't know if we...
For the next time.
Okay, so you'll put it in whenever the... Because one of them is to lay over, to not have it at the next meeting. Okay. So...
Go ahead.
I'm with Mr. Manning, I'm confused. I didn't think that we made motions when no action was requested.
You're fine.
It's, you know, just a suggestion.
If it's a recommendation that she's making to change the verbiage, are you fine with changing the verbiage? I thought...
I think we were looking for...
We're not voting, we're not voting on the policy, but what I've gotten from staff is that when we have recommendations, that they ask us to place it in the form of a motion, just whatever, whatever that language is, so that you'll have clarity with regard, with how to take action? Is that not my understanding? Or are you okay with...
That is correct, just that we have a definitive answer on whether or not we leave it as calendar days, or we bring it back the next time, or if we're changing it to business days.
Yeah, so is a recommendation sufficient for you to make that change? Or do you want us to make a motion? Because my understanding was that you wanted us, that it was helpful for you to get a motion so that you would have...
It makes it very clear if it's done in the form of a motion. But if you can reach it through consensus, we just need a definitive answer on the changes that are being made.
That's fine, because we wouldn't be voting on the policy, Mrs. Agostini, just your recommendation for the language. But if the suggestion is clear, that's fine. Whatever makes it clear for you all to take action. If everyone is in agreeance to the language chain, I'm fine with that.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Plank.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Some of it comes in and out. We wouldn't be really needing to take any action on laying anything down at this time either, right? Because there's no action requested on any of these, right?
We don't have to. It was just, I wanted to get clarification. If we make a suggestion with regard to a language revision, is that sufficient for you just to change the language? Or do you want us to make a motion, asking us to make a revision to the language?
As long as it's clear that what the board is desiring.
I think we've got a consensus. Is everyone clear? Is everyone in agreeance to changing the language to three business days? I'm fine with that. If we have a consensus, I think we're okay.
Madam Chair, I will support that change.
Okay, same here. Mr. Shad? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Plank. Are there any of the questions regarding... I think we've covered everything. All the As, the A, all the Ds, and the Gs, have we not?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
On Policy GCF, I'm just looking for an explanation. If a vacancy occurs during the year, what happens then after the superintendent fills a vacancy for the remainder of the year? At that point in time, if the person's not coming back, does the person that's filled in get the position? Or does the job then become posted?
Can you say what policy it was again?
Policy GCF, the last paragraph of the first page.
Mrs. Agostini, can you repeat the question just for me, if you don't mind? I'm with the...
I'm just looking for clarification or understanding for the last paragraph.
Okay.
If...
The superintendent is authorized to that paragraph?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, no. I'm sorry. It's on the first page.
Okay.
The last paragraph on the first page. Should a vacancy occur? And the superintendent fills a position. Then what happens at the end of the year if the person isn't coming back?
Should the position come open during the school year? As it states in here, they issued a letter of agreement because they're working less than 152 days. At that time, should the vacancy occur? We typically post, advertise the position at the end if a person is interested in staying on for the next school year. So we post the position, and a person can apply for the position.
So it would be posted? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding this policy or any others at this time? Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. No, going once, twice? Thank you, ladies. At this time, we'll move on. At this time, we'll move on to item 11.2, an update on discipline. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm Chair, members of the board. Mr. Cleveland Smith will come before you this evening to provide you with our discipline update. The information in this report is discipline information from the 2017, 2018 school year. You'll also find some comparison data from the year previous to that, the 1617 school year as well. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Davis. Tonight, I'm going to go ahead and share with you some information regarding discipline, give you an update. And I'm beginning the update from January 2018 till September of 2018. The first item there, the discipline matrix, we had a professional development training for all administrators in January of 2018. As you know, last year, this 2017-18 school year, was the first year that we fully implemented the district matrix. We had focus groups with administrators and professional development with them in the spring of 2017, as well as during the summer. With, in January, we brought them back in, where we could go ahead and do some more professional development with them, taking them through scenarios on the matrix, going to where they all were able to collaborate and, you know, discuss how they would handle different discipline scenarios. So we did that in January. The next item we did, we started this a little before January, but we just finished it up. And that's the development and implementation of a process for placing discipline online. What I mean by that is, for those students that end up in, coming up for expulsions, recommendation for expulsion, in the past, we've always had the schools collect the information and send it to administrative services for the due process hearings. What we did last year, we brought in all schools, elementary, middle, and high, and anyone that dealt with discipline. We provided scanners for them, and we trained them on scanning those documents for the due process hearing, where they could, once a student was recommended, they could scan that information. And our office could print that information for the documents we needed for the hearing, which, again, cut down on paperwork, cut down on in-office mail, again, to help look at trying to speed up that process. So we have implemented that this year. Third item is the development and implementation of the bullying protocol. Last year, we began looking at a protocol for bullying. We addressed, we've always addressed bullying in our district. But what we decided to do is have a specific protocol for all schools to follow. We sent that information out. We had a focus group. We sent information out to all our principals, to VET, and other administrators to look at. And we came up with our protocol. One piece of that protocol I want to go ahead and bring to your attention is, and I love this part of our protocol, is that we are also providing services, counseling services, for both sets of students. As, and I always use this, the call myself, I'm recovering disciplinarian. So as a recovering disciplinarian, in the days when I practiced in the building level and I administered discipline for something like bullying, I always looked at the person that had made the infraction, then always look at the victim. We joined with Lead Counselor, Lead School Counselor, Dr. Morgan, and we brought our school counselors in on this protocol, and they have a piece of that. Administrators go through... go through the investigative part of it, and have specific questions to ask and to make sure they, um, get answers to in the protocol, but our school counselors provide counseling services for both the victim, as well as the person that did the bullying or the alleged bully. And, uh, when you look out there, a lot of places, matter of fact, I think we're the only one I found that's doing that. So that's one of the things I really wanted to point out to you. In addition, some of the other things we've done since January to now, administrative services, behavior intervention specialists, and instructional support services, um, we provided training in restorative practices. We provided that for, um, um, 45 people in, um, February. It was a two-day training. We brought in the, um, International Institute for Restorative Practices. They provided the training for us for two days, and we trained, like I say, in Mar, in February, 45 participants. In March, we brought them back for a three-day training. In that three-day training, that was a train-to-trainer model. And in that piece, um, we trained all three of our behavior intervention specialists, as well as others in the district that are now trained to provide that training. And also, we did, we conducted professional development on the revised code of conduct that you approved last December. We wanted to make sure all administrators knew about that, as well as, well, we provided the bullying protocol in June and July, and every time we can, we do provide training and update training on the discipline matrix to make sure our administrators are up to date on that. Want to share some data points with you at this point. What you see there before you is the number of students with in-school suspensions over a three-year trend. It's, you have your elementary, your middle, and your high. In this number, these are, uh, this is unduplicated data. What I mean by that is, that is, uh, so if a student received a suspension, it's the, the, the number of students that were received in-school suspensions. It's not the number of in-school suspensions total. So I might have received six in-school suspensions, but I'm only counting in that number one time. Uh, when you look at that data there, and I have the total for you in another, um, slide that's coming up for each of those years. In in-school, you see that we have been, um, over this span of three years, we have been going down with our elementary. Uh, matter of fact, that has reduced by 54%. Our middle school numbers, they have gone down, but they have not gone down that much. Um, you see, we started with 977 in the year 1516. We dropped to 1617 to 865, but then we went up by another 20 again in, um, uh, 1718. But those numbers are, did decrease by about 8% from, uh, 1516. And then you see our high school numbers. We were at high as 1,001 in-school suspensions that year, and this past year, we had 535, which is a reduction of 466 students. And if you take a percentage of that, that's These are numbers, again, um, duplicated number, the number of students with out-of-school suspensions over that three years. Um, elementary, we started at 468, and we, as you can see, last year, we had 475, so those numbers did go up. Uh, middle school numbers, out-of-school suspensions, the first two years, they were around 964, 63, but last year, our numbers did go up to, um, 1,045. Uh, but our high school numbers during that time did decrease each year, and they, matter of fact, decreased by a total of, uh, 68 students during that This, this graph here illustrates, um, our enrollment for each one of those years, and the number of in-school, out-of-school suspension and expulsions. Um, ours, as you can, um, so this is the total that you saw for the elementary, middle, and high for in-school and out-of-school suspensions. Um, you see, that first year, we had 2,382, and then for 1718, it had decreased down to, um, 1,617, which is a decrease of 765 students. Even though our enrollment went up, our numbers went down there. When we look at our out-of-school suspensions, um, they, uh, last year, they were 2,462. And then when you look at our expulsions over each of the years, you see that for 1415, we had 72. The, um, 1617, we had 52. And then last year, uh, we increased by 50. So that, that is a, a big increase, even though our enrollment each year has been going up. Our expulsion went down and then went up. Last year, um, you know, that was a high number. But I also want to, I have the same information that I want to show you in this next slide, which puts it in percents, and want to share that with you. Uh, in-school numbers for, um, over this past, these past few years have been going down. You see, we were as high as 8.9%, and it dropped down to 5.9%. So that's a 3% decrease why enrollment increased. Our out-of-school suspension numbers during that time, they pretty much have fluctuated somewhere around the 9%, and then you see, um, what that, the number of expulsions are, which for that first year, when we had the, um, 72 in 1516, it was 0.2%. Um, 1617, 0.9%, and last year, with the 102, it was 0.37%. What I want to bring to your attention is, with the expulsion, I want to highlight this. That is, each year, as you can see, we are well under 1% of students that actually get expelled. So if you, with that, and the talk, even though last year's numbers were up, uh, which was 0.37%, it's still less than 1%. And to put that another way, 99.63% of our students never got to that point. So in any year, we have never got, 99% of our students are not at that level where we're talking about expulsions. We hate to, um, lose anybody, but again, when you're looking at the, the number of students that we have, um, I wanted to highlight that for you. Okay. A few more numbers, and then I'll, um, want to share some more information with I wanted to go ahead and show you about the infraction, the total number of incidents, and you see that for the last three years, we were, we were as high as 38,867, and last year, we were at 35,535. That was less. 1617 numbers were down more than that, but those were the numbers. Want to talk about the level of infractions for a second. Level-one infractions, um, that's where we, we, we see most of our infractions occurring. Give you some examples of that. That's like, um, cutting class, um, tardies, ID violations. So that's where you start looking at those numbers there. Um, matter of fact, when you are looking at those, um, um, level-one infractions, 19%, well, no, I take that back, 19,791 of those 30,043 were at the high school level. What you're seeing there, as I gave you example of tardies, no visible ID. So our administrators are dealing with those issues. They are addressing those issues, giving the tardies and all for those issues. But again, when you're talking about that, you're talking about detentions. You also are talking about, uh, making sure that we keep a safe environment, because where a student, you can tell that, that the student should be there for them with the IDs. That's the purpose of having the ID, if we talk about safety and all. So, you know, the majority of those, um, level-one infractions, when you're talking about the total incidents, uh, level-one infractions take up or comprise about 84.5% of, um, the infractions. So a lot of that is there. And level-ones are not the ones that are going to get you suspended unless they are repeated level-ones, and then you get to that. Level-two infractions, um, yes, our numbers went up there, uh, from the previous years, but level-two infractions are those infractions like, um, fighting, um, you have, um, alcohol violations there, major disruptions, stolen property, those are what fall in there. Level-two infractions can range anywhere from a detention all the way to an out-of-school suspension, and with some level-twos, they can be a recommendation for expulsion too. Your level-three, that's where you see, uh, 464. Those are your most serious in, infractions, and those are the ones where you have your drugs, um, sex violations, um, weapons, they fall in there, and you see that we had, um, 464 of them. Um, if you are looking at, where you take the level-two and the level-three infractions, that's 16.5% of the infractions, um, of all the fractions that occurred during last school year. Interventions. Um, we have our family intervention services. Um, those are the services that we provide for students that have been recommended for expulsion, uh, those students that are having difficulties in school. Schools can recommend them there for family counseling, um, to, again, to provide services for our students, trying to get them on track. You have, we have LARADAT, which is the Lexington Richland Alcohol, Drug, and Brew Council for those students that end up having, um, alcohol or drug violations. We send them there to provide counseling services for them, to help them with, with their prevention. A few years ago, the board asked us to, um, look at interventions for students with sex violations. We came up, matter of fact, we developed this ourselves in the district, uh, with the help of, um, instructional support services and, um, our lead social worker, Abby Cobb, um, a program called Healthy Choices, Positive Decisions, and with that, uh, we provide counseling for the individual, for the students, as well as we do family counseling with them with that too. Another intervention that we have, um, used over the last few years, um, and I touched upon this before in the beginning, uh, restorative practices. Um, you know, when a student is suspended, a student has caused a disruption, or has, in other words, um, broken trust in an environment, restorative practices are a way to go ahead and bring them back in that environment, to let them restore the environment that they damaged. Even when they go back for their, um, after, if they make it to a due process hearing, when they're doing their re-entry conference, that's a time to provide, um, some of those restorative practices for them at that time. Also, um, our behavior interventionists, they, um, have provided PD for our schools with restorative practices, and some of the other PDs I wanted to name that our behavior intervention specialists have done last school year in particular. They have provided PD, uh, for classroom management, de-escalation, culturally responsive classrooms, trauma-informed care, classroom versus office-managed behaviors, and understanding the multi-tiered system of support process. Moving forward, um, what we are doing, if we were move forward, we are going to continue to review the discipline data. Um, those points I brought out about the number of students in middle school, where those numbers of out-of-school suspensions, um, have gone up, we're going to look at that. We're going to do a deeper dive, where we can look at and identify, uh, where students have received more than four or five suspensions, to see what's going on, and see what, um, interventions and what strategies we can provide for those students. Last year, um, in May, uh, the board gave us, um, 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 discipline priorities recommendations. Uh, we have been looking at those, um, and we are continuing to look at that. Uh, we're looking at how to, um, make the expulsion process smoother, and, um, and how to expedite that. We also look at, one of the other, um, recommendations was to increase the consistency of outcomes and reasons for expulsions and adherence to the discipline matrix. Uh, we are going to continue to provide professional development for our assistant principals, administrators, principals on the discipline matrix, to make sure that they are adhering to it and getting by that. And we also are making sure that when we have due process hearings, we communicate the outcomes as quickly as we can to our parents, and if our parents have any questions about that, to go ahead and, um, answer them as quickly as we can. We know it's a difficult time for them, but we want to go ahead and provide them all the services that we can provide them with, their explanations. The next one is development of a focus group to revise discipline. And, uh, Dr. Davis, back to school, um, talked when he came to us that, um, at that first board meeting, he talked about revisiting discipline. Uh, we are in the process of, uh, we have developed a, a team, a, a leadership team that consists of myself, uh, Ms. Katina Davis, and, um, Dr. Tasha Morgan, and we are in the process of looking at the data, looking at, um, the infractions that are occurring, and as I said before, about doing a deeper dive, but we are also looking at bringing in others there. We're looking at bringing in, um, classroom teachers, we're looking at bringing in, um, uh, bus drivers, we're looking at with transportation administrators, as well as, um, regular ed, special ed teachers, as well as school counselors. Again, looking at everything we can in regards to discipline and try, and pinpointing the points that stick out. And what we are also looking at developing is a philosophy of discipline. And we, we, we are, we, we have started that process. We're going to go ahead and, um, have those persons identified, um, to meet in October, the middle of October, around October the 15th, and once, um, the first nine week ends, we are going to go ahead and convene that group to look at and dive deeper into our discipline data. So those are our plans right now in regards to, um, revisiting discipline. And lastly, um, which is a part of this too, is provide, um, you, our board, with a quarterly update, um, on discipline, and, um, we would do that each quarter, give you an update on the discipline. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Questions, Mr. Shad?
Madam Chair, um, and Mr. Smith, you can answer this, or Dr. Davis. Um, with a few exceptions, it seems as though the trends are favorable in terms of the number- in terms of the number of infractions and expulsions. There tend to be trending down, downward in this three-year period with a few exceptions. And I understand taking a deep dive and that sort of thing. But, um, with this third bullet on the moving forward slide, what is the thought process behind looking to create this focus group to revisit discipline in light of the numbers actually going down? For the most part?
Okay, even though our numbers, even though, when you look overall, our numbers are going down, but we still want to have a concentration on this and look deeper to go ahead and bring those numbers down even more. When you talk, and that's why, and I did not do, and let me back up for one second. Um, one piece of this is come up with a philosophy of discipline across the district. And in doing that, if we continue to work to bring these numbers down, one thing we're going to do is keep children in the classroom and keep them in the building where they can learn. So as our discipline numbers go down, that's more students in the classroom getting more instruction. And that should help us bring up our, uh, achievement numbers that way. So that's the reason why, even though they're going down, the, the further down they go, the more it should have a correlation to achievement going up. And that's what our primary goal is.
You took the words right out of my mouth from my second question. The, um, or actually comment, the, so we're in the first year of, the first year of information of the matrix. Is that right?
Well, it's second year, because last year was the first full year of, and, and we're, this is the second.
Second full, okay. Um, I'm sorry, back to the focus group. I, I tried to listen carefully, but maybe I didn't hear. Is there any member of the community outside of the district that would be part of the focus group?
Uh, we're still identifying that, so we, we, as we move with that, we can, we can look at that.
Okay, and do you expect there to be recommendations to come out of the focus group? Or just impressions given to us of the deep dive that you're doing with the data?
Uh, we expect recommendations to come from the focus group.
To the administration?
To administration.
To administration, okay.
And focus groups should consist of teachers, administrators, community members, the same pattern or the philosophy used for the focus group for the initial discipline task force, uh, to give us an idea of ways we can improve the discipline. There is a dichotomous relationship that exists between classroom management and discipline, because there are several factors we have to keep in mind. One factor is, how do we make sure that we have a quality learning environment for all students as well as a quality teaching environment for our students, while at the same time, same time, making sure that we're addressing issues that need to be addressed in the classroom? And what is the appropriate balance of that and the appropriate action and response to a student? Uh, when a student commits a disciplinary infraction, with the idea of maximizing student instructional time, but at the same time balancing that against the, um, impact that that disruption may have in the classroom? And so I've tasked Mr. Smith in our previous conversations to look at alternatives to those, to those types of things, where we can continue to deliver instruction to our students if we should have to separate the student from his or her classroom environment for an extended or short periods of time. That may include virtual options, um, that may include, um, some after-school instruction, that may include some before-school instruction, that may mean, um, other, other avenues to continue to give the student the instruction, but at the same time to address the behavior and to make sure that the student understands that there is a adverse impact on his or her academic, um, his or her learning, as well as an adverse impact on the learning of others and the conditions that are created in the classroom.
Okay, thank you. And I think this is last, with regard to the LARADAC intervention, we are aware, of course, uh, with regard to students that come before us for expulsions, that, um, what I appreciate that the district has done in partnering with LARADAC is, we've had these discussions, is services are provided to students who we have been able to identify that, um, are abusing drugs, and they, they utilize this LARADAC service, but also simply those who may be in possession of them and may have the intention of trying to sell it, not necessarily using it, but selling it, but they also avail themselves of LARADAC. In fact, part of that is a condition of their, um, you know, whatever discipline we provide to them, is that they also get that service as well. So I'm very appreciative that we have that partnership with LARADAC. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Additional questions? Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Thank you so much for that detailed, um, presentation. Have a few questions. First, I want to go back to the discipline data chart. And you indicated that the students, if they serve in ISS six or seven times, they're only counted once. Walk me through that, because I'm just trying to figure out, how do we have an accurate account on this chart if we're only counting the students once, if they've been in there eight or nine times? So is this a true reflection?
This reflection is, for in-school and out-of-school suspension, is unduplicated data. So it is counting a student one time. Now, there, there's also data that gives, um, the total number of suspensions in school and out of school. But these are the numbers of students that were either suspended in school or out of school. It's the unduplicated, just like the expulsions are unduplicated because they're only one person. So it's the same, I'm only counting a student one time. I, I didn't give the, the numbers of in-school suspensions, the actual number of in-school suspensions and the actual numbers of out-of-school suspensions.
Is there any way you can send that back to us at a later date? So we can really see true numbers here, because this is not a true reflection?
I can.
The other thing is, want to ask you a question. I know that some of our schools have moved away from in-school suspension. So what number of schools, if you have that information, if not, get it back to us later, are really using in-school suspension? Because there are many schools who don't use in-school suspension. So when you look at these numbers, is that a reflection of thirty schools? Or twenty schools? Or fifteen schools?
In-school suspension at the high school and at the middle school level, basically, all twelve of them are using in-school suspension. When you get to our elementary schools, you are absolute correct. Some of them do not use that, uh, but some of them do use it. So I do not have the exact number of schools that, at the elementary number in front of me, that are using and not using, but I can get that information to you too.
Okay, the next question is, you said that level one infractions, if you can go back to the level one infractions, you said those consist of like IDs and tardies and just minor infractions. But you gave us alarm and number, you said out of the thirty thousand, about nineteen thousand are the level one infractions. And I'm very concerned by that, because if we're saying out of thirty thousand, about nineteen thousand are IDs and tardies, we really need to go back as a team to see how we can better serve our students and keep them in the classroom over IDs and tardies.
Okay. I, what the nineteen thousand number I gave you, uh, for all high schoo, all level one offenses, I gave you some examples of, of, of level one infractions. There are several other level one infractions that, uh, that are there. Uh, you have, um, disrupting class, disrespect. You have a total of about twenty of them in listed there. And I just didn't give you all of them. I just gave you some examples of those. But all of those, to answer your question, all that nineteen thousand number I gave you, they are not all IDs and they're not all, um, tardies. There are other level ones included in there, like, um, um, the disrespect. Uh, you have some cutting class in there. It's a, a inappropriate behavior. There's a range of others that are in there too.
So how would we know which ones are minor, like IDs and tardies? And then how do we have it broken down into elementary, middle, and high? Because that nineteen thousand is a combination of all of the levels, correct?
No, that nineteen thousand of that thirty thousand, that was for high school.
So that's only for high school?
Yes.
So what about middle and elementary?
All right, for middle school, level one infractions, I'll start with elementary school. One thousand five hundred and forty-four. Middle school is eight thousand seven hundred and eight.
Okay, just a few more questions. Want to go back to the interventions, if we can go back to that chart. For the family intervention services, I know that's optional. So are we now looking towards making that mandatory for families and students? Or is it going to remain optional?
The ones, those students that come up for, um, hearings, due process hearings, uh, where they go back on probation, or if they go to, where they go back to probation, family intervention services, um, is something that they have to go to. We, we do assign them to that, so that hadn't been optional that we've been assigned.
So it's mandatory if you're recommended for expulsion? But for suspension and level one, it's still optional?
Well, the schools can also recommend them for family intervention services.
But would it be mandatory or optional?
Uh, it's, um, it's not, you know, they can make the recommendation. They, sometimes they don't do it, and if they don't attend, and if the student comes up for expulsion after that, um, then we can, again, assign them to, to, um, assign it to them.
So it's optional?
If they don't, if they don't attend, you know, but most of the ones we assign family intervention services to, they go to family intervention services.
At this time, Dr. Elkins, that's a great question. At this time, it is optional for the students if they are suspended, whether or not a, a school decides to recommend family intervention services. If we decide to make it mandatory, I would say that we will definitely need to increase staffing and funding to, to suitably address that type of thing. So right now, it is, uh, an option and recommended. What we've attempted to do at this point is to utilize our school counselors and make sure that those students are getting some sort of counseling when they come back after having multiple suspensions at the, at the school level first, because we are suitab, we are, we do have enough school counselors to address each individual site. Um, uh, and, and so we, we hold off for the, the, uh, mandatory ones after those students have been recommended for expulsion. And it's usually a condition upon returning back to their school after, um, having a hearing.
Okay, great. And my final question, you mentioned restored to practices and the interventions, but I know we've only piloted that in just a few schools and we do have trainers now. So what is the timeline of those trainers now, being able to go into all of those schools? And have we designated how many schools each year we're going to implement restorative practices? And then also, maybe we also need to move restorative practices to moving forward because of the fact, we don't have it in all of the schools, so that's still a goal? So if you could go back and answer the other question with restorative practices?
Okay.
And the training piece?
And we, and, you know, our behavior intervention specialists, we meet, and that's what we're looking at about how we're going to continue to provide that professional development for those, um, schools that, um, have not been trained yet. So that's one of the pieces we are addressing this year. And we in the process of coming up with a schedule, how we're going to go ahead and handle that.
So the information that I requested, you'll just get it to us in our board docket for the next meeting or?
Yes, I can go ahead and provide that for you in, um, in your brief if you would like.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Those were great questions, and I, I appreciate you asking those questions. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for, uh, answering those questions, um, for the board. We will provide that additional information with more of a detailed breakdown of, um, data discipline to the board in the next board brief, um, for you to review. And then at our next, um, uh, data, uh, discipline update, hopefully we will see, um, some, some, uh, some positive changes in that direction. Just one thing to share, um, I, I think there was a great, a couple of great questions, a couple of great points, additional points to make. This is an accurate reflection to our best ability of how many infractions that are taking place in our schools on a day, on a yearly basis. Twenty-seven thousand plus students, a hundred and eighty days of school, that's twenty-seven thousand times one hundred and eighty possibilities of some type of disciplinary infraction that has occurred in our school district. Uh, the number of infractions that we've had over the course of last year, I think the total number of infractions, including bus incidents, was somewhere around thirty-seven thousand disciplinary infractions. And that includes everything from level ones to level threes. But looking at the number of infractions and what resulted into a suspension, right now, it looks like the total district suspension rate is somewhere around eleven percent. So eleven percent of, uh, all incidents are leading to about eleven percent, um, suspensions come from some sort of incident. Uh, so a little less than one out of ten incidents result in some type of, uh, suspension, whether that's in school or out of school. There's definitely room for improvement in that area, uh, and to, to get that, that, that percent even lower. Uh, and again, at the same time, it's going to have to be done in, in concert with, uh, members of our staff, faculty and staff, because we can't leave teachers out of this equation. Uh, and for, and getting valuable input from them, because of the, we want to make sure that they, um, uh, can teach in a quality classroom. But at the same time, we can continue to make sure that we're holding students accountable for their behavior and responsible for their behavior in a restorative manner. Uh, and so part of that is deciding what is the disciplinary philosophy that is district-wide? Is it a restorative, a restorative practice philosophy? Is it a positive behavior intervention philosophy? Is it a best philosophy? Or is it going to be a, a, a combination of, of all three? Uh, but we need to make this task force, hopefully will give us some idea of what direction we need to take so we can fully implement this district-wide, because you're absolutely right. We've kind of, we've kind of set stagnant, uh, for the last couple of years as we've been trying to address this. Um, our, our administrators have been doing a wonderful job, and I appreciate them accurately reporting this because they could simply just not report it. And so it's good to know exactly where we are so that we can, uh, we can address those things, uh, head-on and own this discipline, own this data, uh, the same way that we own all of them. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Smith, oh, Mr. Manning, yes?
Just a couple of things. Uh, one, again, I, I appreciate the report, and, and I just want to say, I appreciate, you know, this district, this board has given a lot of focus to discipline for many years now. And so I want to give kudos to everybody that's been involved with this. I mean, we've come a long way since I've been on the board on where we are now with behavioral interventionists, specialists, um, and all the other work. I also want to kind of give a little bit of a positive shout-out, because I think something that's not reflected in these numbers are some of the things we put in place that prevent students from ever being a statistic on these charts. So we have Abby Cobb and our social workers, um, we have our psychologist, Dr. Shirley Vickery. We have, um, RTI programs, which address some of our students' academic needs, which sometimes help them to prevent them from becoming one of these statistics. And so I think we're also doing a lot on the preventative side. Um, I hear a lot of districts talk about zero tolerance. Well, for us, first time you, you know, you smoke weed, if, if you don't have any other issues and you have pot in the class and it's just you, we're going to give you, you're not missing seat time. Somebody talked about we're kicking students out. We're not. They're staying in the classroom and they're getting the services they need. First time they have a sexual offense, as long as they don't have a lawn laundry list. They're not out of, they're, they never miss a day of class. They are still in the classroom and they have their time with the, um, with interventionist to help. So I think we've done a lot to keep students in the classroom and not always have the first thing. And I appreciate, Dr. Davis, you made the comment that it is in concert with protecting our educational environment. And so I think that's important, because I know at one point you said a student in the classroom may help us academically, but that is balanced. It may, but if that student is disruptive to the other students, then we actually draw away from our academic performance. So we do need to find that good balance and in the equation and not always just assume that, that one thing. And the only other thing I'll say is you had made a comment that we had a big increase when you talked about the fifty-two to a hundred and two, maybe on a relative basis. But on an absolute basis, um, you know, a fifty-student increase out of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-one students is not a big increase. It is relative, but not on an absolute basis. So I think we have made a lot of headway. I appreciate, Dr. Davis, the efforts y'all are making to continue to address this. I appreciate our board taking this very. I appreciate our board taking this very seriously. As it is a serious issue for families that are dealing with this, right? I mean, it's very serious for our teachers in the classroom. It's very serious for other students who are here to learn. And it's very serious for our district to remain competitive, that we provide that good balance of safe, a safe environment, and one that's conducive to learning. And at the same time, take the interest of the student. And I hear all the time our students are going through more socie, social, emotional issues, mental health issues that are related to some of those things, and so it is a balance. But I do appreciate the, all the work that's being done, and the preventative piece, which I said is not necessarily reflected in the numbers that we got tonight. So thank y'all for all of your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Are there any additional questions or comments, Dr. Elkins Johnson?
I just want to add to, Mr. Manning, preventive measures also old-school parents.
I will say, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for the compilation of this data. And every, every question that I have has been checked off. The deeper dive, I appreciate. I think, Dr. Davis, yeah, I'm distracted now. Dr. Davis has artfully talked about the balance that we have. We want to keep kids in school. We also want kids to be safe. We want our teachers to feel comfortable, so that balance is so important. So I appreciate the efforts. I appreciate that we're going to get quarterly updates. I appreciate that we've got, we're paying attention. I appreciate that, that you're paying attention to students who misbehave, don't typically want to. If there are things that are going on at home, and things that are happening that would make other students unsafe, that we're trying, the deeper dive is so encapsulating to more than just studying the data. It has a lot to do with trying to figure out what's wrong and getting at the root of the matter. So I absolutely appreciate that. And the development of a philosophy of discipline, I appreciate that. It's not about just getting our numbers down. We want our numbers to be down. You can just stop writing kids up, and, you know, your numbers will be zero. So it's not about just getting your numbers down, but, but trying to figure out what our philosophy is, trying to get a balance that keeps kids safe while, while addressing the needs of students who have those needs, and making sure that our teachers, just balancing the whole equation. So I absolutely appreciate that. Discipline philosophy means a lot to me, so I appreciate that. And thank you for all of your comments and your presentation. It was heavy to get through, but we appreciate you taking the time to arrive at that data and to share it with us. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I just want to say, I just want to publicly thank Mr. Smith and his staff, especially Ms. Chisholm, for the work that she does with the students. When I served in a different capacity, I sometimes thought the hearing officer was on the other side of me. But she does a great job. I've sat in on some of those due process hearings as an advocate for a student. And she always gives grace, but also direction. And, well, I won't say the tape always goes off, but those kids leave out knowing that Mama Chisholm has said something to them. And she, I feel like she airs on the side of keeping the child in school, but sometimes the decisions that they make, actions they take, leaves her with no other choice. And of course, they obviously have a right to appeal, and then it comes to the board. So I do want to commend her for that. So that philosophy of discipline also includes inclusion. So I appreciate what she does, and obviously, what you all do, Mr. Smith. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Additional questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is item 11.3, update on our summer food program. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board. We had before this evening, Ms. Abby Cobb, who will be giving you a presentation that will be quite shorter than the presentation that Mr. Smith just delivered.
Before?
I'm just teasing, Cleveland. Will present information on the summer food program, Ms. Cobb.
And let me interject, before you start, I don't mean to interrupt you. Just, just to let people know, our last board meeting was canceled because of the, you know, it wasn't just because of weather, but because the order of the governor, you know, tied our hands to have a board meeting, even though it seemed to be sunny here, but we couldn't have a board meeting. So we have a lot of our items that have rolled over to this meeting. So this is a little bit lengthy, so for those of you who are bearing, who are bearing through this and hanging in there with us, thank you. And not all of our meetings are this heavy, or this deep, but we needed to get through the subject content that we had to go. So it's a little bit, it's a little bit lengthy tonight, and that's why. But thank you all for your patience. I'm sorry to interrupt you, have at it.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Davis. Thank you for that segue, Dr. Davis. I wanted to make a joke, I wasn't really sure if it was appropriate, so. And many times, I don't have the ability to bring a message that's so positive and upbeat, and tonight, I get to do that. So we are going to talk about something really exciting, really fun, and I hope to see lots of smiles on your faces. So tonight, we wanted to talk about the summer food program. And this year, we had 10, 15 sites. 10 of those were our school sites. And as you can see, several of our schools had multiple programs that they served throughout the summer. So those were serving different kids at each of those sites. We had five community sites, and we're going to focus particularly the majority of our night on Hunter's Way Apartment Complex and Polo Estates Mobile Home Park. But as you can see, we are making a conscious effort to increase the access of meals to our kids throughout the summer, so not only at our schools, but community sites. And I do want to take a minute to make sure that I recognize that Ms. Melinda O'Connell and Eric Bankhead from Sedexo Food Services are here. And they are the brains and make sure that all of this works. They just allowed me to come speak with you tonight on their behalf. So this year, we serve 36,571 meals. That's a lot of meals. That's a lot of meals that we provided to kids who were not with us. They made this effort to either come to our programs, their parents signed them up, or they came to us specifically for meals. So out of those, almost 12,000 breakfasts, 428 snacks, and 24,000 lunches. We did really want to highlight the fact that our numbers did increase, and we think that there's lots of reasons why that occurred. But we did extend the time period that the summer food program was offered. Traditionally, we would take that first week off to kind of allow things to shift, close down, and then kind of restart back up. But Ms. O'Connell, when she came on this year, said, "We're going to make sure that kids get fed and have access the full entire summer. We're not going to," so they made that happen, so appreciate that. So again, we wanted to focus, or I wanted to focus, beg my indulgence, two particular sites, which was Hunter's Way Apartment Complex and Polo Estates. And as you recall, for the past couple of years, we've really made a conscious effort in trying to increase the access of meals to our kids. We know that kids have trouble getting to us. We're not a huge walkable community. In order for kids to get to us, they might have to pass very busy roads. It's not safe for them to do so. More times than not, parents are homeworking, and they don't have access to get to us. And so one of the ways that we felt like we could address that was by bringing the meals to them. And so for the third year in a row, we've been in different neighborhoods. Hunter's Way Apartment Complex, this is the third year that we've been there consistently. And we had the opportunity to go to a new site this year, which is Polo Estates Mobile Home Park. It was, it's under new management. We dealt with that about two weeks before summer started with brand-new management. We were able to work through that. So they were previously called Northgate, and they are one, pretty much the biggest mobile home park in our community. This year, we probably roughly provided about 3,000 meals or lunches just at those two sites. And that's about 1,000 more than we did last year. We provided four onsite supervisors. We had one lead onsite supervisor who's here with us tonight, Ms. Melissa Bunch. She's been working with us for two years in a row. We had Richland County security officers, and if you can see, Mr. Larry right there in that corner. He is infamous at our family sites, and they quite appreciate him. We had our lovely Sedexo food truck, and just countless fun and engaging activities. And rather than listening to me talk this whole time, we do have a video that we're going to show. Thank you to the communications department. The summer food program is a program that provides meals to students throughout the summer. So a lot of times, students have their main access to meals during the school year. They might eat breakfast and lunch with us, and then they go home for the summer, and they don't always have a consistent access to meals. A lot of the programs are offered here in our schools, or other locations within our community. And then we had two particular sites where we provided lunch meals to students in their neighborhood. The kids come down, we've hired some staff to work this summer, and they provide the meals. But we also provide a wide variety of activities through volunteers through our community to really make the experience fun and engaging. This program provides some really essential services for our students during the summer. We know that there's always some type of what we call summer slide. When kids are not in school, they may not be reading quite as often as we would want them to, or doing stuff that is academically focused. A lot of that can truly be addressed just through providing engaging activities with our children. And so even if some of those activities aren't necessarily academic-focused, these kids having access to caring adults who come out and just show them love, show them appreciation, show them that their, their time is important, truly has a lot of impact on our kids socially, emotionally, and academically. Richland School District Two really values our partnerships. This program would not exist without our partners. Most importantly, Sedexo Food Services, not only are they the sponsor for the event, but they also help ensure that we can provide our staff onsite. We also partner with Grace Life Community Church and North Star Christian Center. They came out every day this summer and provided volunteers to do activities with the kids.
We have a group of about 10 youth that are out here to play games. We brought different crafts, necklaces, beads, chains, different games they can play. So it's mostly just to let them be artistic and have some fun and be creative while they're, while they're getting some good food for the summer.
And I'm just so, I'm just so excited about, about the school district partners with the churches, because it's almost like, my mom, my mom used to say that it takes a village to raise a kid. And I realize that it's not just the school district, but the whole neighborhood raising the kids. And I'm just so happy, I'm just so glad to be a part of it.
Another one of our partners is Richland County Library. We've been partnering with them in a wide variety of areas, not only just with our summer food program. They come out and they bring their mobile van and allow our students to check out books during the summer. We've partnered with Sweet Peas Ice Cream in Blythewood. They came out one time per week at each one of our two sites and provided ice cream to the kids.
When I opened this place, I knew that I needed to reach out and find where I can do good in this community. I knew that there was a need to get these kids fed. And so I said, "Well, since that's all set up, can I just bring ice cream?" And they just went crazy. They were so pleased that we were there. They were so excited. They've been so grateful. It's just been a tremendous experience.
I'd also like to highlight a program called In Childhood Hunger SE. And we received a grant through them this summer where we've been able to partner with the farmer's market that's here at R2I2. And we've been able to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables and take that out to our families. So not only are we providing a meal for lunch, we're also providing some food that the families can take home with them. Exposure to these types of activities during the summer will really help our kids address that summer slide. We know that the food is what brings them there, but the activities and the caring adults is what really keeps them coming back. And it also will just help them socially and emotionally know that there's adults who care about them. So as stated in the video, the partnership that we have for our summer program is, meets our full definition of premier. These are some of our extensive list of our, of our partners, and we're going to talk in a few minutes about the ones that we're highlighting tonight. The Living Springs Church and Forest Lake Presbyterian, these are churches and agencies that have worked with us on so many different things, and just really are committed to Richland School District Two. We had plenty of staff that went out. We have a lovely video of Nancy Gregory doing kickball. I did not bring that, I did not share that. I do think that Marshall Lynn Franklin is our reigning kickball champion. If you look on Twitter, you see lots of fun, fun, fun pictures where all of that is highlighted. But it's, it was a full spectrum of community agencies to individuals, district office staff, that really made this experience really meaningful for our kids. And I just wanted to say, kind of end with some pictures here. That top right-left picture, Melissa texted this to me the first time that Susan came out and did the ice cream, and that little boy's picture, shirt says, "It's the best day ever." And I just think that that just totally sums up what the summer did for those kids. And these faces just say it all, too. A little girl just, just eating a cucumber, you know, straight out of her, you know, out of, straight out of the box, or whatever the case may be, so. We are very appreciative, and we just wanted to end tonight, again, on a wonderful note of highlighting our premier partners. At this time, I would like to recognize four of those. We have North Star Christians, North Star Christian Center, if you don't, guys don't mind standing up. We have Chris Peterson, Stefan Props, Evan, Ethan, and sweetie, I didn't get your name.
Gerard?
Gerard? Gerard. North Star Christian Center has partnered with us for two years, and this is the second year where they have volunteered every single day of our program. They are exemplary in their commitment to us, and they, this year, worked at Hunter's Way. And you saw that Gaga, that's what, they call it Gaga. The Gaga, it's where they played, I don't, kickball inside. And Keith got to enjoy that, and I think he had to go home and take a shower afterwards. Twice. So I think we're, at this time, we would like to bring you guys on up so we can present you a certificate. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Very good. Thank y'all. Okay, next, we have Grace Life Church, and Mr. Tom Tanner is here. And again, another exemplary example of a community partner. Grace Life Church came on, they volunteered and did a week of service for us last year, and they just loved it so much that they came back every single day again. So they were our lead community agency at Polo Estates, and provided volunteers every single day. And again, we could not have done it without them. They truly ensured that those activities were provided and kept those kids coming back. So, Mr. Tom Tanner. All right. Our next one is Sweet Peas Ice Cream, and we have Susan DiMarco here from Sweet Peas. And Susan, I just want to just express how grateful I am. She, she reached out to us and said, "How can I help?" And wanted to be a site herself. And I said, "Well, what, you know, we got this going on." And she said, "Well, can I come bring ice cream?" And I said, "Yes, ma'am, you can bring ice cream as much as you want." And as you can see, the kids enjoyed it so much. It was just, it heightened everything so much. I can't explain what a little bit of ice cream can make a summer for a kid, so. Susan and Sweet Peas. And the last premier partner that we are going to recognize tonight is Shandon Baptist Church, and we have Ms. Mindy Jamison. And they came, really came on, on board with us and provided volunteers consistently throughout the summer. And they enjoyed it so much at Hunter's Way that she is now, Shandon Baptist Church is providing an after-school program in Hunter's Way Apartment Complex. And I think you said you had 40 kids on your first day? It was extraordinary, so, Mindy Jamison. And that's all I got. Is there any questions you have for me?
First of all, thank you so much for that presentation. That did make us smile. So thank, thank you so much. If I heard you correctly, you mentioned that you guys have to pay employees.
Yes, ma'am.
I was wondering, have you partnered with the high schools? Because many of those students have to have community service hours, and maybe allow them to come in and their fork and cut on costs for you guys?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, we have a volunteer flyer, and we send it out to all the student activity directors, as well as the magnet leads. They receive that information to encourage their student groups to come out. And we absolutely did have some of those student groups, so that wasn't an exhaustive list.
Other comments? Yes, Dr. Davis?
I just want to thank all of our partners for all of your support, for being premier partners for our students. We talk about being a community, being a family, and all being partners. I really want to thank all of you for taking time out of your schedules to come here this evening, and to allow us to recognize you for your support of our students. So we're very appreciative. I think Sweet Peas is the best ice cream. Just want to say that. And I do want to say, sincerely, thank you, because being a student, a child, who received free lunch every summer, growing up, every, every summer, from elementary school to high school, every summer. summer, you never know who you're feeding in those programs. You never know what that student who walks through that door and gets that lunch every day during the summer, who he or she may turn out to be. Some of them may one day turn out to be a superintendent of a school district. Maybe a doctor, who knows? But an educator. But I do want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for your commitment to our students in our district. We so appreciate you.
But anyway, what I tell people is that so many, so many of our stories of caring and giving to our communities are unsung. We share these things. We share with the papers. We share with the media. But sometimes we just get it done. We have partners who work with us to make sure that something that needs to be done gets done. You know, Hurricane Florence, of course, I'll comment on later, but no, I'll do it now with regard to Hurricane Florence. You know, there were official posts when we would serve food and the community would be involved. But people were, kids were being served and fed and were part of backpack programs the very first day that they were out of school. We have students who eat only at school, who eat the majority of their meals at school. They eat breakfast and lunch, and those are the majority of the meals they have. Two of their three meals a day are served at school. So there are so many things we do that are not publicized. There are so many acts of kindness that our community provides that are not publicized. But we do things that need to be done. We get things done. We make sure that students are, this is just one example of that, and I appreciate it, but I just want to take a moment to thank our community when it gets involved and helps us to make sure that we are taking care of our community. It's not always published. It's not always something that people do. But when we have kids that have needs and eating is major, making sure that you eat is major, that it gets done. So we're so thankful for the people who come together and partner with us to make sure that gets done, just because you want to, not because you need to. We're grown. We don't need community service hours. We're adults here. But just because you want to, and it's incumbent, and it's been laid on your heart to do that. So bless you for what you've done. Bless you for spear, I know there are a lot of moving parts, but you've spearheaded this, and I just thank you and bless you for that.
Thank you.
And it did make us smile, yes.
The job is done.
Thank you so much. Next item on our agenda is item 11.4, data snapshot. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have Dr. John Arnold, who will come before you this evening, provide you with the final report and update for this evening. It will be a report on our data snapshot from the 2016-2017 school year. John, data's not that exciting.
I think clearly.
But we are listening with eager ears. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Dave, excuse me, Chairman Mackey, Dr. Davis, members of the board, it's my pleasure to give you this brief snapshot of student learning data. The snapshot will be based on last year's state assessments that have so far been publicly We'll begin with the South Carolina College and Career Ready Assessments. Again, this is given to students in grades three through eight, and they take the English Language Arts and Math Test, and there are four performance levels for these tests. And we're right into the numbers. This first graph shows the percent of Richland II and South Carolina students who scored meets or exceeds expectations on the English Language Arts Test by grade level last year. As you can see, a greater percentage of Richland II students met that performance standard in ELA in grades three, four, and five, and grade seven than did the state. Richland II students were just slightly below the state in grades six and eight. This next graph shows the percentage of Richland II students who scored the meets or exceeds expectations for grade, by grade level for the last three years. And I'm pleased to report that the percent of students who scored meets or exceeds expectations increased from 1617 to 1718 in all but one grade level. Additionally, the percent of students who scored meets expectations or higher is greater for 1718 than it was in 1516 in all six grade levels. This graph shows the percent of Richland II and South Carolina students who scored meets or exceeds expectations on the mathematics test by grade level last year. The district's elementary students had a higher percentage of students who scored meets or exceeds expectations than the state at all three levels. Richland II middle school students, however, had a slightly lower percentage meeting the standard at all three grade levels. And this fourth graph shows the percent of Richland II students who scored at the meets or exceeds level for the last three years. And once again, I am pleased to report that the percentage of students who scored meets expectations or higher increased from 1617 to 1718 in all but one grade level. Additionally, the percent of students who scored meets expectations or higher is once again greater for 1718 than it was in 1516 in all six grade levels. In an effort to reduce testing of our students, the state changed the structure of the South Carolina Palmetto Assessment of State Standards, or SC-PAS test, last year. In previous years, students in grades four through eight took both science and social studies. But now only grades four, six, and eight take the science test. And you can see there are the same four performance levels for the science tests as we have for the SC-ready test in ELA and math. In social studies, we have only students in grades five and seven taking the social studies test. And the social studies test still uses the same three performance levels that were established when the SC-PAS was first administered in 2009. So again, you've got a different set of three performance levels instead of the four. Again, this graph shows the percent of Richland II and South Carolina students who scored meets or exceeds expectations on the science test by grade level for last year. A slightly greater percentage of Richland II students scored the meets or higher in fourth grade, but slightly lower in sixth and eighth grade when compared to the state. This next graph shows the percent of Richland II students who scored meet or exceeds expectations on the science test for the last two years. Two years. South Carolina transitioned the SC-PAS science test from three performance levels to the new four performance level system in 1617. And of course, that means that we can only compare the performance of our students over the last two years. And as you can see, there were small declines in the percent of students who scored meets or higher in fourth and sixth grade, while there was a slight increase in the percent who scored meets in eighth grade. This graph shows the percent of students, again, Richland II and South Carolina, who scored met or exemplary transitioning to our other levels, on the social studies test by grade level for last year. And once again, our elementary students had a slightly higher percent of students meeting the standard than did the state, while our middle school students were slightly lower. And the final graph shows the percent of Richland II students who scored met or exemplary on the social studies test by grade level for the last three years. The fifth grade performance improved from 1617 to 1718. The seventh grade performance improved from the previous year and also surpassed the performance of seventh grade in 1516. As I said when I started the presentation, I've only shared with you tonight the results from the performance assessments that have been publicly released. The End of Course and the Ready to Work Test are still embargoed by the State Department of Education. The mandated 11th grade ACT and SAT results have not yet been made public. I will be happy to provide you with the additional updates when those are available. And at that time, I will probably have more numbers to share with you than Mr. Smith shared with you tonight. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the interest of time, I won't do what we normally do with our exchanges.
Thank you, sir.
But with the first level, with the SC-ready, there are four performance levels: exceeds, meets, approaches, does not meet. What in the heck does approaches expectations mean?
Excellent question, sir. Essentially, what the state has done is recognize that in the distribution of students, you've got students who, quite frankly, are not meeting the standard. But you have a small band of students who are close but have not yet crossed over to where they're actually meeting the standard. It simply allows the state to recognize with a little more discrimination as the performance of the students, rather than just lumping them into, "All these kids did not meet." It allows us to recognize where some students are closer than others. Going back in time, SC-ready originally, and this isn't numbers that were typically shared publicly, but we have had for many years, going back to SC-PAS, not just the three levels that are typically publicly reported, but within the not met, there was a not met one and a not met two. That was information really just for school districts. This simply brings that kind of into the light for the public.
Thank you for sharing that. And now I'm just going to speak, Madam Chair, and Dr. Davis, and the rest of my colleagues. I have a concern because we now, we have these four levels. And if you, at first blush, if you look at these numbers, and I'm just going to put it out, they look bad. We have less than half of our students meeting or exceeding in English language and, you know, you just go on. But now that you've clarified the approaches expectations, I would expect there to be even a larger number. But still, and even for the state, we're better than state, than the state numbers, but what does that say about our state? That we are only at 39.2% of students in the state of South Carolina in the eighth grade meet or exceed English Language Arts. They give us all these mandates, but they don't give us the money to do our job. However, as a premier school district that we're striving to be, I would like for you all to share with the public, who may not always come to these meetings, what are we doing with the money, with the very little money in comparison to what is state law, by the way, that we're not receiving? What type of reading intervention and math intervention are we doing to try to move the 48.6 up and the 38.9 up? I know, but I'd like for the public to just get a snapshot, a nutshell, a flavor of where we are. And on cue, Doc is here.
Good evening, Dr. Davis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have response to intervention. We have level literacy, which is sponsored by Penel. It comes from the Reading Recovery Program. We see a lot of growth with those students. We moved kids from the do not met stage to the approaching stage. We also have focused math, create the way as well.
Okay, thank you. And we also have partners, and I'm sending out a call to action for volunteers and mentors to get into schools, come in, read to these children, give up some time. If for no other reason, selfish reasons, these kids are going to take care of us at some point in time. So we need to make sure that they are ready, they're equipped, to take care of us one day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Additional questions or concerns? Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Thank you so much for that report. And I know, not only in Richland II, but just statewide, we're struggling with middle school students. So I truly understand that. But I wanted to go back to Mr. Shad's question, and I had notes down here about science. I know that some of the elementary schools do have a science lab, because I've had an opportunity to walk through some of the schools and go into their science lab, but not all of them. So what are we doing to implement science now that we know is one of those testing content areas where years before it was not, or you had a choice, I think, of science or social studies? Now we don't have that option. So what are we doing differently now in our elementary schools for science?
For much of that response, I would have to defer to Ms. Gregory. She's probably going to have additional information that I could share. But also, to Mr. Shad, to your point, I would be happy to provide the same information, including the approaches, the percent of students who scored approaches, because that does in fact change the picture substantially. Yes, sir?
With science, we're pursuing partnerships, STEMS. Many of our schools have a STEMS emphasis, grants. Our content specialists are working closely with our schools. And you're right, some of our schools do have science labs, but many of those are due to different grants, MSET grants, those kinds of things. Or they have been creative with their FTEs to actually create those positions. And Mr. Emmer, Dr. Emmer actually, is our elementary content specialist. And then Ms. Deanna Fender is our middle school and high school content specialist. We're working very closely with our schools. But there is a big shift with the science engineering practices that is different in the past, that we are focusing exceptionally on working on those practices with our schools.
Any other questions?
That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Manning?
Yeah, thank you for the report. I agree with the comment that we certainly are struggling in some areas. Dr. Davis, I do appreciate the fact that we did improve in our elementary school across the board. I mean, certainly improvement is in the right direction. I think we all agree on that. I would like to see, I think the comment was made about how we compare to the state. I'd really like to see at some point, I'm not, you know, whenever is a good time, how we compare to other like districts? Because for me, that's probably more important than how we compare to the state, because we compete with some other like districts. And so that's probably important for us at some point to consider how we perform against those programs. And, you know, I know the question about science, and some schools have labs and others don't. I think we have a bond referendum that might be out there that, you know, addresses some of those collaborative spaces and spaces that we need for our students to have equity in our schools for programs like science and other things. So even though I tell people all the time, I always have people ask me about stadiums. I never have anybody ask me for another science classroom. So thank you, Dr. Elkins, for being the first one to ever ask that question, because it is important. So, but otherwise, thank you very much for the report.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or concerns?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Plank.
Yeah, still here.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say it like that. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say it with such little enthusiasm. With such little enthusiasm.
But I woke up for a few questions. I did want to ask Dr. Arnold, was, do you have an idea of standard deviation for these types, for some of this data? How close is it clustered to the 50% mark? And then two, with testing, is there an element to where it is, where essentially it's designed around that 50% mark? I do see where we have some data that's up in the 60s, but is achievement essentially clustered around that 50%, 60% mark? Or is it possible, or some districts have get up into the 90s?
First question, I would be happy to provide you with some additional information about standard deviations, the amount of variance in the scores. Of course, that's going to, the variance is going to vary by the size of the school. You'll find that there's going to be greater deviation among smaller schools where you've got fewer students, where they can impact those numbers at a higher level. But again, I can provide that information for you. And second, the performance of the students around the state of South Carolina, as far as whether or not we have schools achieving at as high as 90% of students meeting the state standard, off the top of my head, sir, I would say no. I don't believe I could speak appropriately tonight about where the highest performing schools are and what those levels are. But I am quite certain that there is nobody performing at the 90% of students meeting the meets or exceeds expectations level. I think what you will find more common among districts like Richland II is that they're performing very similar to us. Again, you'll see in some grade levels where we're outperforming similar districts, or where they're outperforming us at a different grade level. But I would be happy to provide that information.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Arnold, if you wouldn't mind sharing the equivalent of meeting met in ELA in third grade. third grade?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but Dr. Davis's point kind of gets to the nature of this assessment, and it's something that I wanted to mention earlier when, Mr. Shad, you were asking your question about our performance. We do have exceptionally high and rigorous standards that our students are being assessed on. And what Dr. Davis is alluding to is that because this South Carolina Ready Test allows us to not only get a performance level on the student, but we can also look at a percentile rank among the students in the state. And what we found is that although it varies by grade level and subject, at some grade levels and some subjects, a student has to score compared to other students in South Carolina as high as the 68th state percentile just to score meets expectations.
So I think to share that, to put that in perspective, it's not as simple as I take a test, I pass the test, and therefore I show proficiency and I met. It's actually I have to score within the 66th or 68th percentile of all test takers that took this test, and then I'm identified as someone that has met the expectations. So it's not as simple as just simply taking, I think, for our public and for individuals who just may not be aware, it's not as simple as taking a driver's test, I pass the test, and I now have a driver's license. If we equate that to everyone who took the driver's test and based on their score, where do you fall? And if you don't fall in the top 68% of the people that took the test, then therefore you don't qualify for a driver's license or the bar or IMSAT or SAT.
We may have safer roads, but I don't think that's a good way to govern.
Questions, concerns?
Thank you.
Not Arnold, thank you. I typically have my deep dive, but thank you. All my questions have been answered tonight. Thank you for providing that data for us, and we look forward to updates. Bless you. Next, moving on to item 12.1, agenda items for October 9, 2018. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have for the October 9, 2018 future agenda items, student appeals, adult ed requests. We'll continue with our legislative update. We will have a school focus, which will be Lake Carolina Upper. We'll also look at the approval of the policies presented this evening, DDB, DI.DIE, DKC, AC, GBA, GCE, GCEC, GCF, and GDF, along with the approved recommendations from the board in making some changes to the policies. In addition to that, we'll bring back before you the community eligibility provisions of the Healthy Hunger Kids Free Act of 2010 for your consideration of approving that resolution. We'll also have proposals for revisions of GCC, which would be professional staff leaves and absences, GCO, evaluations of administrative leave, administrative staff, and GDC, support staff leaves and absences.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Are there any additional requests for the next, the October 9 board meeting or a future agenda? I wanted, oh, I see it here, the certification of delegates for the South Carolina School Board Association meeting, what that deadline's, November 13. We've got that. Want to make sure that was on here, so we're good with that. Thank you, Dr. Davis. At this time, we will move on to item 13.1 as a second opportunity for participation. There is no one who signed up, so I presume there is no one who wishes to address the board at this time. And if that is the case, we will move on to item 14.1, board and superintendent comments. And I will start on my left with Mr. Shad.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
What'd he say? Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Agostini, thank you.
I'm going to be brief as well. Thank you, Abby, so much for you and your group for our wonderful presentation and making us, or providing a premier food program. And then finally, I just want to wish my friend Lauren Long Bank a happy birthday. Lauren was our inspirational speaker in the spring. She received a standing ovation because she inspired us with her faith, love, and perseverance. So I want to say happy 30th to our polka dot princess.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Just want to say thank you to our colleagues, the faculty and staff of Richland Two. We truly came together as a family when we had to go over to the shelter and just work with those families who were unfortunate, had to be in the shelter. So just thank you for demonstrating the family atmosphere and for being premier. Good night.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Dr. Clashon Parker?
Just want to say thank you for those very informative reports. And Abby, great job as usual. It just never fails, ceases to amaze me, all the things that we do in this district to help the children and to work with our kids. It's just inspiring, you know, even though I've been out for four weeks, it's just inspiring to sit here and to listen and to see what we're doing in our schools and with all of our children. Thank you so much.
Mr. Manning? Thank you, Dr. Clashon Parker.
Well, first off, I appreciate Mr. Plank not being here. I spread out.
You certainly did. I noticed that earlier. You certainly did.
I had a little extra room. It was not to move away from Dr. Clashon Parker, it was just because I like to spread out, feel right at home.
I noticed that earlier.
Yeah, thank you. So a rare treat. But, and Cleve, I want to thank you for your report. I know everybody else said it was long. I thought it was fantastic, man. You keep up the good work. We have a lot of work to do in that area, so we're just reflective of that. So thank you. I had the opportunity, another great part in Spring Valley, about this church in Spring Valley. I spent three hours on Saturday. I did a double shift because the group I worked with was just so motivated, we just kept going into the next shift. But we put together 112,500 meals for hurricane victims and for our backpack program. So I am now a master at scooping lentils into a bag. So I have a new skill to add to my resume. But just a lot of energy, a lot of great support from the community, and that was a real privilege to be part of a program like that. So thank y'all very much, and I hope you enjoy the rest of the evening, what's left.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Mr. Plank, you still there?
I am, I am. I just want to say thank you for the presenters, although not visual, I was able to hear everything and go through the data. I also want to just list, Dr. Davis, and just thank you for his commitment and his character in our district, and we look forward to having continued service as our superintendent. And just thank you for all the work tonight.
That's it? Wow.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Plank. All right.
I look forward, I do look forward to having my face back.
I'm teasing you. Yeah, I'm, oh, he did spread out. He's not exaggerating. He did, he did that. Thank you, Mr. Plank. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Please keep the families who are still recovering from Hurricane Florence in your prayers. While we were fortunate this time, there are counties and districts that experienced significant flooding and are in need of our assistance. As you know, we've missed four days of school because of the hurricane, and in order to make up missed days, Richland Two will now have school on October 18. Originally a student holiday/teacher in-service day, October 19, originally a student holiday, and December 21, originally the first day of winter break. The early dismissal day for elementary and middle schools scheduled for December has been moved to December 21. Once a final decision's been made regarding the fourth missed day of school, we will communicate that information to everyone in a very timely manner. The Richland Two teacher forum in partnership with the League of Women Voters will host a candidate's forum. Seven candidates have filed for four seats for election on the Richland Two Board of Trustees. The forum will begin at 6:30 PM Tuesday, October 16, at R2I2 Conference Center. The community is invited to hear the opinions and positions of each candidate. Board members, district administrators, and I continue to travel around the district sharing the facts of the bond referendum. Just in case you haven't heard, Richland Two is asking voters for permission to borrow 468.4 million for capital needs in the areas of safety and security, which represents about 61% of the total bond, transportation, learning spaces, arts, and athletics and technology. Learn more on the district's website, richland2.org/bond, or come up, come to an upcoming information session on October 6 at 6 PM at Forest Lake Elementary, or October 8 at 6 PM at Westwood High School. And finally, across Richland Two, we are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month among events at our schools. We are hosting three events here at R2I2. The first is an Hispanic Heritage Musical Celebration on Tuesday, October 2, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. We hope that you can join us here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. To reiterate, Dr. Davis's prayer about the victims of Hurricane Florence, of course, we've been talking about those people who were, you know, not victims, but they were affected, those who were affected temporarily, you know, long term. But I wanted to, I think, well, we have prayers that are going out, and lots of people have been doing things to provide water and meals, resources, and people who have nothing because it's underwater. But I'd like to take a moment to thank the folks in this district, to thank the folks in this community. I know we got a chance to go out to see meals being served at Dent Middle School, and I got a chance to go to Ridgeview. And every night that I went there, there were people, I had, you know, I went at night because it was convenient for me after I finished my day, but there had been people who'd been there all day. And part of folks, aside from feeding folks and making sure that they had resources, there were people who were there every day just to make sure that folks had company, to make sure children had games to play with, books to read, which I love, and I got a chance to read books, you know, for as long as attention spans would allow. But there are so many members of this, of the staff, of this District Two staff, you know, faculty members, who weren't in the papers, their names weren't in the papers, their names weren't broadcast across radio, but they were there doing what had to be done, and I absolutely am thankful for you, members of our community that I got to meet who are in the National Guard. People don't realize how that affects people who are in the service, who serve our country. We appreciate that, and who are there just keeping people safe, making sure that there is order. And defying stereotypes, you don't know why someone's where they are. One of the persons I met at a Ridgeview Shelter just was there teaching children how to play chess, and me, I know a little bit now, teaching people how to play chess. And he was there because he lives on a sailboat. He lives on a sailboat in North Charleston. And who would think about people who live on a boat being affected by, you know, winds and rain and just things like that? You just never know why people are where they are. So it was just eye-opening for me, but I so thank the Richland Two community for all that you did to come together, people who didn't sign up, just showed up and was there to entertain children and just children who are happy to see folks come back every day because they're bored, out of their minds. They're there all day, they've gotten on their parents, you know, and they're here a little bit, and they're just happy to be entertained. But there are so many moving parts in that regard, and for our community, for our parents, faculties, that I just thank you for that. Now, I want to, Dr. Davis?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, go right ahead.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay, all right. At this time, we did have, we did have a special call board meeting last week where we undertook the business of providing an evaluation for our superintendent. And at this time, I would like to read a summary, a summary of that evaluation at this time. And of course, you'll get a copy of this, but we're just sharing it for the public consumption. Can everybody hear me? Am I loud? No, gosh. The mic is on better? Okay. Dear Dr. Davis, I'm writing on behalf of the Richland Two, the Richland School District Two Board of Trustees to provide a summary of the board's evaluation of your performance as superintendent during the 2017-18 school year, which we was discussed with you during executive session at our meeting on September 18, 2018. The purpose of this letter is to summarize the conclusions of the board and to provide you with appropriate guidance as the district proceeds through the 2018-19 school year. The board wishes to commend you on your overall distinguished evaluation of the 2017-18 school year. Your evaluation assessed your performance in the areas of policy and governance, planning and assessment, instructional leadership, organizational management, communications and community relations, and professionalism. You are highly visible in all of the district's schools and throughout the community. You are an outstanding leader for the district. You have great communication and speaking skills and represent the district well at all times. You are a person of great character and integrity. We are aware of the significant amount of time you spend serving the district, and we appreciate your tremendous commitment to the district. If I could reiterate that and put that in all bold, boldface and all caps, I would. You are always here, always present, always on, and we appreciate that. We believe you're serving as superintendent-elect for a year provided you, for a year, provided you with a wonderfully effective transition to your serving as superintendent during this past school year. You've done a great job focusing on the district's strategic plan and implementing it with clarity. You've reached across all areas of the district and touched every aspect of the district's operations with a great level of professionalism. Your communications with the board, staff, and community have been extremely effective. You provide the board with timely updates on important district matters. We appreciate the efforts you have made to develop individual relationships with each board member as well as the board as a whole. We, okay, we consider the district to be a family, and we consider you to be the patriarch of our family. You've done an excellent job developing the district's culture and creating the expectation that the district and all of our schools will be premier. As you focus on the 2018-19 school year, we encourage you to ensure that all of the services offered through the district office are also premier, including, but not excluding, HR and other offices. You exhibit excellence at all times, and we'd like to see all departments of the district reflect your commitment to excellence, professionalism, and customer service. We encourage you to continue your work with community partners. We also encourage you to continue your work with reinforcing consistency on the district's schools, including in the areas of student discipline. Finally, we ask that you continue your strong focus on effective communication, which is already premier. As a result of your overall distinguished evaluation, the board voted to extend your contract one additional year or through June 30, 2021. Additionally, the board voted to increase the percent of your annual annuity by two and one-half percent for a total of 6% effective September 30, 2019. In conclusion, we thank you for a job well done. Of course, should you wish to respond in writing to the results of this evaluation, you may certainly do so. We greatly appreciate the work that you have accomplished during the first year as superintendent, and we look forward to the leadership you will continue to provide the district in the coming years. Should you have any questions regarding the evaluation, this summary letter, or any aspect of the evaluation, please do not hesitate to contact me. And of course, I signed as board chair, but it's on behalf of all seven of us. This is the formality of it, providing, you know, focus areas or strengths, but we're just required to do that. This is the formality of it, but just breaking protocol, if any board member has any comments they'd like to share at this time, I'm happy to welcome that. If not, the letter has summed it. Well, how about that? How about that? Dr. Davis?
I know we're ready to dismiss, so I'm going to be very, very brief. I just want to say that, first, thank the board for the confidence in selecting me as superintendent of Richland School District Two, a lifelong dream of mine. To also thank the board for constantly being honest and supportive, direct, and working together with me to ensure that we're providing premier, a premier learning environment for our students and a premier working environment for our teachers and our faculties and staff, as well as for our community, a source of pride for our community. A big thanks goes out to my cabinet, to all the teachers and administrators in the districts, the students that I interact with, our bus drivers, to all, to everyone. I really am very humbled by that, and if you know me, I try not to take any credit for anything that's going that way. I've always been taught to look out the window when things are going well and look in the mirror when things are going poorly. And so I try to practice that each and every day, and I think that the designation of distinguished, it's not just a designation of distinguished for my evaluation, but it's a designation of distinguished for this district, for the students, for the parents, for the teachers and administrators, for the school board. And I'm just so humble and proud to be a part of that moving forward. There's much to be done, much work that continues to lay ahead of us, and we'll continue to operate in a manner that is impeccable and premier for Richland School District Two. So I just want to say again to all of my board members, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. At the hour of 8:59 PM, let's consider ourselves adjourned.